Good morning. We will call the October first, two thousand twenty-four council meeting to order. Ask Councilman Meehan to lead us in our invocation pledge and we will please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that we have in our country, especially in our area. We pray for those in East Tennessee and North Carolina who are suffering great loss and just of how to even live. We ask that you be with them and those of us that are trying to help support them and help them recover. We're thankful for the city and the good things it does for our city, and we realize that every good blessing comes from you. In its senior son's name, amen.
Amen. Let's pray this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item three is roll call. I'm Marquise. See all council members present, except for the council member Holt. You keep hearing your prayers ahead of death in our family. Item four is approval of the minutes for September third, two thousand twenty-four council meeting. Those minutes were emailed out to you all, so there'll be no additions or corrections. They stand approved as read. We do have one proclamation. Tonight is National Night Out. So we have a proclamation. It says, whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a unique community building campaign. Whereas National Night Out campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in our city to join over thirty-eight million neighbors across seventeen thousand communities from all fifty states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide. Whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes strong police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer and more caring places to live and work. Whereas each year, neighbors in our city assist with local law enforcement agencies through a joint community building effort with the support of our National Night Out. And whereas it is essential that all neighbors in the city of Jackson come together with police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. Now therefore, I Scott Conger, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby call upon all neighbors of the city of Jackson to join and proclaim October first, two thousand twenty-four as National Night Out.
She's gonna put me on the spot here. How's everybody doing this morning?
Good morning.
That's all y'all gonna give me. Well, we got a long day ahead of us, but anyway. So National Night Out is a very special time, not only for the Jackson Police Department, but it's actually a special time for the community of the city of Jackson. We're excited to invite people out to the Jackson Police Department in order to partnership with us. We're gonna cook a lot of good food. We're gonna have games, vendors, and many other things, door prizes as well. Some door prizes as well for the kids. There will also be other locations. I guess, is that most of them on the screen, Ms. Graham? Okay. There's gonna be other places that, as you can see on the, on the screen, that are gonna be having National Night Out as well, block parties. So we have different officers that actually stopped all those different places, locations, and they are super, super nice to us as law enforcement officers. And this is just a huge thing for us because we wanting, we're wanting to show the community that policing is more than what you see on TV with body cams and things of that nature. We all have families, we all have children, and we wanna reach out. This is just one night where we try our best to reach out even more than we already do to let the community know that we're not only there to keep them safe, but we're there to help them with anything else they need in life as well. So, Ms. Graham? That's good? Okay. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
All right, now we have invitation for public comment. We have one sign up, Mr. Gregory Thomas.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning.
Councilman Donnell, and the rest of the council, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for holding this public hearing. I'm here representing my family, the Sheds, and the Thomas family of Jackson. My wife Stella Shed was born here and is the daughter of Linwood Shed and Stella Thomas. I am in favor of the ordinance to close the alley between Middleton and LaConne Street. We own the property at two-twenty LaConne Street, which is the end of that alley. We are constantly remodeling that property, and we'd also like to purchase the lot behind that, which is currently owned by Lane. And our plan is to fix up the property, fence it off to Bleely with vinyl fencing, and provide a home for veterans. So that's pretty much where I'm at. I didn't wanna take up too much time, but I just wanna say I'm in favor of that, and I hope it goes through.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Let me ask you, you say you are in the Sheds family. Are you a who's son or grandson?
I married Stella Shed, who is Linwood and Stella Shed.
Okay. I grew up from this, across the street from the Sheds, very fine family.
I know you did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I said, we all like him now.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And move on to first reading. It's consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at twenty forty-six North Parkway from AO Agricultural Open Land District to U University District comprised of one hundred and six point four acres, more or less.
Good morning, Mayor and council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You have the materials pertinent to this rezoning request. This is a request by Jackson State to basically take their campus, which is currently in agricultural open land zoning, and basically go to a university zoning, which is more compatible with the uses and the things they would like to do on the campus as they move forward. So we're, the planning commission is supportive of this and has recommended approval of it to you.
Any questions from council? We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
First, second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item two is consideration of an ordinance to close an alley south from Eden Street between Middleton Street and LaConne Street.
All right, so this item was presented to the planning commission at its last meeting. They're recommending it to you. You have the materials pertinent to this closure. This follows the pattern that many have come to you in the, in the past of unimproved alleys. There's a right of way, but there was never any improvement, so there's no basically public use. So we try to bring those to you and, and put them back in private use, and that's what we're doing here. So the planning commission is recommending approval to you.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
All right, move on to second reading. Item one is proposed budget amendment, JPD Drug Fund, amount of thirty thousand for helicopter paint.
So moved.
Second.
And motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item two is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at Sand Pebble Drive and Palms Pugh Drive from SC one, Pleasant, planned unit commercial to district to B five, Highway Business District comprised of six point one five acres, more or less.
So moved.
And a motion?
A second.
Second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item three is consideration of an ordinance to close an abandoned and unnamed alley located between six-twenty-four and seven-oh-six Lambeth Boulevard.
So moved.
And a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right, move on to new business. Item one is consideration of a contract with JLL for professional services related to redevelopment of Jackson Plaza.
At this time, I'll ask Ally Burford to come forward. She represents JLL, and she's giving you a handout there that just kinda outlines the services that we talked about in pre-agenda. Basically, JLL will be providing us development management services. As I said in pre-agenda, you know, a wise man once told me, when you're not an expert, you go find you one, and they have extensive experience in developing this type of development, a mixed use with a possible sports facility. And so we feel good about the services they can provide us, as well as being able to vet potential developers in the future because they know what it takes to put those teams together, and we feel confident that that will be much better by having their assistance. And so I'll let Ally say something at this time.
I'll keep it short and sweet. To Stan's point, this is something that we do every day. What the, the goal here is to create the trusted partnership with the city, along with our company, and be able to continue that partnership, not only with Jackson Plaza, but moving forward as well to better the community. You know, just what you guys have there in front of you is just a summary of the services proposed for this phase one due diligence program, and that would be what we would be working through here for the next six, eight months to really get a comprehensive understanding and drive that decision for a go, no-go decision on this project.
All right, questions from council?
I bet I get more questions on Jackson Plaza than anything else in Jackson. So let me see if I understand where we are. We paid four million dollars for this land a couple years ago with COVID funds, basically. And then we, is it, okay, well, that's a minor issue, doesn't, doesn't matter. Okay, then we didn't have, now have a consultant, L R K, that we pay how much money?
I'm not sure exactly. I don't have those figures in front of me, but, but we did enlist services of L R K to do some, the update to the master's plan, and also to do us some concept plans for the Jackson Plaza site.
So somewhere with two-hundred-and-fifty to three, to four-hundred thousand be in the range?
I haven't got the figures in front of me, so I can't say exactly, but I'd be happy to look at it and get it to you.
Okay. During this period, this might be off stand, I'm sorry. There were other contracts with L R K also, correct?
The only ones I'm familiar with were the master plan and the, and the Jackson Plaza concept planning.
Reason I'm asking, I think over the last year or so, we spent six, seven hundred thousand dollars with this, and I was kinda trying to decide how that was divided up, how much actually went into the Jackson Plaza. So we're not for sure, but two-fifty might be close, who knows?
It's, you know, the, the, I think there was around two-fifty, and then there were some incidentals that were added to that. So somewhere between two-fifty and three-hundred for the, but I'm, I'm not sure. I don't have those in front of me, but I'll be happy to get those to you.
So, so what did we get for that?
Well, they, they did the initial concept drawings to look at the site, to see what was possible on the site, but that was a very sort of a high-level concept drawing and, and plan. What JLL will do, will take that concept and carry it further and put more flesh on that frame. So that's basically what we intend to do in this phase.
Okay. So this three-hundred or four-hundred and one thousand, give or take, right there, will be to do what?
This will get us, they will do the market research, because again, what we don't wanna do is go forward with a concept or uses or a mixed use that doesn't make good market sense. So JLL will be responsible in doing a marketing plan to see what uses would be appropriate, which ones would make sense from a market standpoint and economic standpoint, and, and put together sort of a, as she said, a go, no-go. Because again, we wanna make sure that when we go forward and start going down the road of further planning, that we pick a, a project that's gonna work. And so that's what they're gonna help us with, as well as helping to vet potential developers that might be interested in, in carrying some of these things out.
So is this gonna be concentrated on a, a new arena, a hotel, or convention center?
Well, that's the things we're gonna look at.
Those are the three things that this study will come back.
That's what the concept plan shows now, and that's the things that we will be looking at in terms of viability.
Okay. So, so I'm getting to the three-hundred-and-eighty thousand. The first thing is, is it feasible to do that from an economic standpoint? Will that take three-hundred-and-eighty thousand or four-hundred thousand?
No, that's a, that's a portion of. That's just one part of the scope that they'll be doing.
Should that be done first before we commit more funds?
It is first.
So, okay, we, we're gonna commit four-hundred and one thousand dollars.
Well, the four-hundred thousand dollar, three-eighty, which their fee is, that's part of the scope to do the, what we talked about from, from the marketing study through the development mix to the looking at potential developers. So all that's contained in that fee, but the first part will be the marketing study, and I've asked them to, to break that out sort of as a standalone deliverable so that we know, basically, bottom line, whether this concept plan that we've been walking forward with is viable.
You got my, you, you, thank you, just, okay, see if I can repeat back what you said.
Okay.
Okay, we'll have a stock gap here at X dollars that we'll review this plan before we spend anymore. Is that correct?
We will have a marketing plan that will decide which direction makes sense for this property. Yes, sir.
Okay, how much money is that gonna cost?
Um, I can't remember. It's a, it's a hundred thousand dollars for that.
So let me repeat again. So for a hundred thousand dollars, if we vote yes on this, will, will definitely be spent to look at the viability of this.
Yes.
If they look at it and say it's not viable, then the contract will come back and, for discussion.
That's one possibility, yes.
Stan, is this something that most cities do when they're getting ready to do something like this?
We would hope so. You know, I, you know, pre-planning is, is most important on anything that you go about 'cause again, we're not, we're not developers, the city's not. What we do is create environments conducive for development. So the, the worst thing would be to go forward with a plan that nobody wants to participate in. So, so we're hoping that this expert team that they're bringing to bear on this project will help us decide what's viable and what's not.
Stan?
Yes.
Are they gonna also help us kinda recruit investors or potential?
Toward the latter end of this phase, they will be vetting, will be looking at potential developers and then making recommendations. And then the next phase that, that we're not talking about today would be actual walking it out with a developer.
So are there any other calls to the city before we start putting shovels in the ground to develop something?
You mean with this fee or?
With Jackson Plaza, yeah.
Um, well, we've had demolition costs, and, and of course, there'll be the cost there, but you know, I can't anticipate anything right now.
Do you anticipate anything else that might up the cost here on this?
To Stan's point, so that what you guys are looking at, and on that second page of that handout, it does have the breakdown there for each of these tasks. This is just phase one. Phase one will get us to that go, no-go decision, and once we get into walking it down with the developers, identifying those people, walking through that process, that is a separate, separate fee. But of course, we don't have that presented today because, to your point, sir, it, it, step by step, one at a time.
So, so if we did, what type money are we talking about roughly? I know you don't know because you hadn't got to the bottom, but we're talking a hundred thousand or a million?
No, certainly not a million. I would say you're probably less than what you're looking at there.
So less than four-hundred?
Slightly, I would say, yeah, I would say less than four-hundred.
Okay. So the total development cost is two-hundred-and-fifty, maybe more, that we paid, four-hundred for this, and so we're gonna be well over a million dollars. Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to one.
Item two?
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, board.
Item two is consideration of the contract with PFM for financial advisory services.
Good morning.
Good morning, Bobby.
We were asked to pursue, evaluate a potential debt issue for capital requirements. So we met with the budget committee, I don't know, is it last month or the month before?
Yeah, I guess.
Maybe, and kind of took a preliminary look at where we were at. One of the recommendations from the budget committee was that we go through a request for qualification process for, these are professional services, right? So you don't do proposals, you do requests for qualifications. We did that, worked with our purchasing department, did the public notices. We had three firms respond. Committee was put together to score the qualification proposals, and PFM was selected. Now, financial advisory services are, are, are very common. Municipal debt issues, particularly of this size or more. Historically, our city has used financial advisory services for debt issues. In fact, I was looking at the debt service policy this morning, and I didn't really realize it, but that requirement is actually in our debt service policy that we would seek these types of, seek these types of services. Financial advisors, they have to be licensed and registered with both the SEC and the MRSB, and they must have no conflicts, they must be independent. And their proposals confirm that with our servicing, our requisition process with our purchasing department. Just for clarification, 'cause I know there's been some confusion about this, and it's understandable. The financial advisory firm, they are, firm would, they are not the underwriter. The underwriting, underwriters are the people who purchase our bonds, right? Underwrite the bond issue. Those are some of the big investment banks that you, you are all, you are all familiar with. The exact scope and size of our particular debt issue will kinda drive the level of services that will be provided by the, by PFM. Certainly, review of our current financials, planning, looking at the assets that we wish to finance with the bond proceeds. Just to kinda determine the feasibility of the debt issue on the front end is something that they would be heavily involved in to begin with. They will check our compliance, both with our own debt service policy, but other state and other regulatory agencies throughout the process. They would help us determine how large a debt issue, the timing of the debt issue, what type of debt issue. For instance, you can have a public, open market sale of bonds. That's what we've done historically, that's what most municipalities do. When they have a bond issue, you have a public sale, kind of an open market process. You can elect, in some cases, to go through an RFQ process and select one underwriter and then try to negotiate the deal with just one underwriter versus being an open, public market sale. And then there are certain circumstances, don't anticipate that being our case, where you have a private placement of this, of the city's bonds. But I would expect that this would be an open mark, open market, public sale of our, of our bonds. They look at our existing debt service to see if there's any opportunities to modify or change our existing cert, debt service schedule that would be advantageous to the city. That's probably not gonna be the case this time because our existing debt was issued back when rates were actually lower than, than they are now. But they will look at our existing debt service. They'll look at ways to incorporate the, the debt service from the new debt issue, right, into the existing debt service schedule such that we have a, a level debt service over a period of time. That would be what we would be striving for, not one that's, we push the debt service back to the back end or we have it heavily loaded on the front end. They will help us with, with the publication and solicitation from underwriters for the public sale of our bonds. The state, we have to go through a process with the Controller's Office to have the debt issue approved. They'll certainly help us with that. They'll help us with preparation for the rating agencies, review of our credit. They'll help us consider whether we wanna buy bond insurance or not bond insurance or, or no insurance. So there, there's just a lot of work, a lot of detail that goes into this. And they've got the professional expertise to help us do it and complete kind of the best deal for the city, so.
Any questions from council?
Based upon the amount that they said they would charge per thousand or whatever.
Sure, yeah.
When you use that formula, based upon the amount that we are talking, contemplating, putting out there, how much does that fee come to?
Good, good question. And the, the way they charge for their services, it's based on the, the bond, the size of the bond proceeds. So their fee is a per thousand dollars of, of bond proceeds. Their fee happens to be two dollars and fifty cents per thousand dollars of bond proceeds. So ultimately, it depends on the size of the bond issue as to what their fee actually is. But if we consider just using fifteen million dollars as a proxy, kind of that computed fee would be about thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars for their services. And then they have certain reimbursables, you know, some travel cost and printing and things like that, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Or Mr. Chairman. Would the fee be bundled back in with this debt issue?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be covered through the proceeds.
Okay. And I was looking at it, the one-seventy-five per thousand.
Yeah.
You think that would be?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, their, their, their fee per thousand, it's, it's staggered. So I think they have a minimum fee of any issue of thirty-five thousand. Where I think we're gonna fall is in the two-fifty per thousand dollars.
And Mr. Arnold, you're comfortable with them, you've used them in the past?
Uh, I am. They assisted us and did a great job with the twenty-nineteen bond issue and the refunding of a lot of our bonds. And so they're very familiar with us already, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Bobby, help me out a little bit. With the, with the other options that were considered, how did the fees with PFM, who you were recommending, how did that compare?
They're, they're, compared, all of them were competitive, to be quite honest with you on, on the fees. You know, the way we approached, you know, the RFQ, when you try to kinda minimize, you don't want the fee cost to be the deciding, the deciding, deciding factor, but they're competitive. I don't recall exactly. They, they may have been in the, in the middle, if I remember right, but.
Who did the county use?
I have no idea. I'm, I'm not sure, so.
Any other questions?
So thirty-seven thousand, give or take.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Item three is consideration of approval of a lease purchase contract of real estate for city homeless shelter.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a contract to, for the city to purchase the property located at five-seventy-six Airways Boulevard, which is the Airways Motel. It includes real estate, the improvements, and the personal property, furniture, fixture, and equipment that is at the hotel now. The total purchase, or the purchase price is one million and fifty thousand dollars less half of the rent payments that the city will make. The, the actual purchase would close on July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, but the city would be allowed to take possession of the property December second of this year. We would have, the city would have a thirty-day due diligence period through October thirty-first that the city could back out for any reason. They'd be able to do any testing, whatever the city needs to do for their due diligence during that period. Take possession December second. The city would make five thousand dollar per month rent payments while they have possession until closing date, so about eight months. Half of those payments would apply to the purchase price, and half of them would not. The city would pay property taxes during the occupancy period, which is about seven thousand dollars prorated over eight months. City would also carry the casualty insurance on its own policy, and that's pretty much the nuts and bolts of contract.
Any questions from council?
Yes, I, I have some. Okay. That building, sir, how old is that building? Do you know?
I do not know.
You know, Ms. Kirk?
No, sir.
You have approximation, either one of you have an approximation?
Lewis?
I miss, I think it was built in the sixties.
Okay.
I talked to one of the prior owners, Don Taylor owned it, and his son, Gary, and I talked about it. It's about fifty or sixty years old.
All right. And when the city does its due diligence, do you have an idea whether or not there's asbestos in that building already?
No, we don't.
Okay, so that'll be part of what we'll be looking at. I have another series of questions about that bu, building. The city has, prior councils voted to build the new homeless shelter on McCoury Street, and there's been, money is expended by the taxpayers for that new building that was to have been built there on McCoury. About approximately, how much has the city paid out toward building the homeless shelter? About approximately, how much has the city paid out toward building the homeless shelter on McCoury?
It's been about two hundred and sixty thousand to date, so that includes thirty thousand from the CRA acquiring the lot, and then the other two hundred and thirty thousand have been design, engineering, pre-construction management services, site preparation, things like that.
Okay, and if we walk away from that and proceed with the Airways Hotel, Motel, then that's two thirty that we have, we lose.
That's already been.
Nobody reimburses us for that anything, is that right?
The two sixty's already been spent, sir, yes, sir.
Two what?
Two sixty.
Okay.
We do get to keep the land.
Beg pardon?
We do get to keep the land.
Okay, and just for historical purposes, how far back did the city start on this venture to build the homeless shelter?
July of twenty-twenty-one was when we committed the grant funds to capital outlay, so that's when we technically started. It was, this project was birthed out of, unfortunately, an unhoused person's death in winter of twenty-twenty, and we worked on a plan and were able to identify the grant funds and committed those in July of twenty-twenty-one.
And from the inception of the city embarking on this route until now, proper notices have been given in the newspapers to inform the public that we were proceeding down this road, correct?
Yes, sir, it's, it's been on the council agenda twelve times.
Okay, twelve times.
Yes, sir.
And during that period of time, prior to the budget hearing that we had, when some people came in and started asking questions about it, but prior to that time, the budget hearing, had anybody come in and, and talked against the project and asked the city not to proceed down this road?
I, you know, I believe, of course, there's always concerns with every project we do, but there was no request against it, to my knowledge, no, sir.
And I note, for the record, that during the budget hearing, there was a group of businessmen that came in and pushed back on the city, pursuing the location of the homeless shelter. And that was led by Mr. Caleb Meriwether, I believe is what his name was. And since that time, this has been on the agenda a few times. And in fact, my colleague, Councilwoman Busby, asked it to be placed as an agenda item for persons to come in and push back against this. And to my dismay, no one came and, and talked about it. And I asked Councilwoman Busby, did she expect for the Meriwether Group, for lack of a better name, to come in and speak against it? And she said that she did. And based upon that, I, I think that, you know, the city losing, when I say city, I'm talking about taxpayers, losing two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to accommodate a group of businessmen, I just don't, I just don't go there. Because they pushed back, and we had already proceeded, and some people view getting the Airways Motel as a compromise. But it's not a compromise, this is an accommodation. And in good conscience, I can't ask the, the taxpayers to accommodate a group of people unless those group of people who pushed back bring some funds to the table to reimburse the taxpayers for what the taxpayers will lose. Was there any type of, of consultation or com, or conference with those businessmen, asking them to reimburse the taxpayers for the amounts of money that the city will lose? Are you aware of that? Was there a conversation?
No, there hasn't been.
What was asked?
No, there hasn't been.
All right.
Ms. Kirk?
Thank you.
Or Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The, the, the grant money that we would have received, though, that has already gone, right? That's not available anymore.
No, sir.
Okay.
Not, not for this project.
Not for this project, sorry.
Right, right.
There, there is potentially an opportunity to provide permanent housing in the McCoury strike, McCoury Site.
Okay.
With that grant money.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question about the due diligence and the timing on that. You said we have until October the thirty-first. Is that ample time, Mr. Cobb, in your opinion, to, let me back up. Asbestos, as I understand, if we do not do any tearing down, the asbestos is not a consideration. Is that correct or not?
Yeah, asbestos is a concern when you disrupt it.
Okay. Are we anticipating disrupting the building where asbestos would come into play, and then the cost of that and, and everything that would go along with that?
No. No.
Okay. So we feel like we have ample time till the thirty-first to do our due diligence, to make sure that this is going to be ample property, that they will be protected, be able to get across Airways, to have a safe location, which currently, the, this.
Let me, let me stop you.
Okay, thank you.
If we need more time, we're not obligated to buy.
Right, that's what I, okay.
So we could always go back and say, there's a report that we're looking for, whatever. So I want to make sure, we think thirty days is reasonable time.
Okay.
But we don't have to buy it, it's still a pig and a hoke, if for some reason there's something we are concerned about.
Okay, so if those things, the safety, getting across Airways, asbestos, if we come up with something, we can go further than thirty-first?
What I understand is, the use of that property is going to be very similar to its use now, there'll be some additions, and I don't know the details of that, but the use is not going to be substantially different.
Okay, I guess my concern, and I just, with Councilman, Ms. Councilman Richard, I want to make sure that we're doing the best for the city, since we did start this in two thousand twenty, and a lot of work from the past council and this current council, I just want to make sure that this is in the best interest for what we all really want to do. So I'm hopeful then, with your all's expertise, that we can accomplish that then, so.
Mayor, I'd like to say, I respect for understanding the loss of the money, but we have to realize, we're talking about lives, people that's going to continue to be on the streets, and we continue to push this back, and I think we're gaining more space as well as more to be to accommodate more homeless people.
Yes, to your point, Councilman, we'll, we'll more than double the capacity that we can serve from, in the Airways Motel. Switching over the grant that we have from HUD, being able to build permanent housing gives them a, I call it, step three of temporary homes, temporary housing to permanent housing, and then allows us to be able to serve those unhoused individuals sooner than we would if we were starting construction.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
And for more cost-effective measures.
You did mention, too, that with the money that we would save, you were going to maybe look at shuttling the individuals.
Yeah, thank you.
For safety purposes, too. To and from RIFA, from the hotel, if we acquire it, so.
Thank you.
Councilman Lawrence.
I agree with what the council members have said. Go back to your point, we think this total project is going to be well under the, what was it, three and a half, four million dollars originally?
About four.
About four?
Three point four.
Okay, so, so how much do we expect the final product to be right here, that we're ready to move the homeless in, cost-wise?
One point one.
One point one, plus renovation?
Yes, I think, well, which I'm sorry, which I think will be minimal, because it's already set up.
And that, that's the point I want to make, I, I cannot see how this could possibly be more, it looks like it's got to be a ton under. Am I missing something?
No.
So to address your concern, I am too, we just threw three hundred thousand out the window, but for the, this was probably the right answer to start with, if we're taking this, Councilman Howard said, looked at it.
Are you saying the bottom line figure will be less?
A lot less.
That's what it looks like to me.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking a million dollars, two million less.
Yeah, millions less.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, let, let me though ask about the price, a million fifty thousand. When was that hotel last sold?
July of this year.
Okay, and how much was it sold for?
Five hundred and fifty thousand.
So these people are doubling their money.
Yeah.
In six months, is that correct?
I think he paid for it over time, I don't know.
But it's still, the price was, was that, okay.
I think, I think it was, his was the lease to purchase also, and the final purchase price was that, and then he also put in a few hundred thousand in upgrades, because when our COGS department, building inspector looks at the best they've ever looked in, they can remember.
As a matter of fact, the environmental court looked at it as demolition candidate years ago, and they spent a tremendous amount of money over the years, bringing it back up to a pretty decent state.
Okay, I was just, wasn't in the negotiation, but if they paid five hundred thousand, you know, we're just selling it for a million in six months, they had to spend a lot of money in between there, so. But whatever deal, if it's still beneficial to us, it's beneficial to us.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What information do we have about the, two questions first, what information do we have about the usable condition of the property as it sits? Is it move-in ready, ready to serve, or do we anticipate further expenses to bring it up?
Yeah, from our initial building inspector, they looked at the rooms, they looked at downstairs, the apartment that the owners lived in, and said that everything is basically , there's some cosmetic things, of I think, some siding coming down, but other than that, you know, change, obviously changing the linens and, you know, putting that in, I think it's move-in ready. Am I wrong, Greg? You can check it, yeah. Yeah, I'm correct.
So we don't anticipate significant cost of?
No.
I mean, it's in operation, people are moving in and out every night.
Right.
And question two, how does this affect having a warming shelter available? Because we had planned for the McCoury property to double as a warming shelter, will this hotel be available for that at all?
I think probably some limited capacity, there's, there's a two thousand square foot apartment area, there's a lobby area, one more larger area, and so this will allow for that. But I think partly for, we talked about the warming shelter, is that we will only be able to house twenty or so individuals, and so at the point of this is a sixty-four room facility, then we'll be able to house more than that, and then utilize some of those rooms for warming shelters if we need to.
So we do anticipate the hotel doubling in that service as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
I made a motion to accept.
And motion?
Second.
And motion is second, all right, go back to further discussion now?
The, the question of it that was brought up about transporting the homeless from the Airways Motel to RIFA, I guess, a lot of them eat their meals at RIFA, I'd like to pursue that discussion, is that going to happen, or is that just something we're thinking about?
No, I think this is, the conversation we have is the amount of money that we'll save, this was a, this was part of the option that we had to, to shuttle, so, because we, what we don't want to happen is individuals trying to cross four-lane bypass, because we know how people drive on the bypass. And so this will be utilizing some of those dollars saved to get a, a shuttle bus to transport them back and forth.
Okay, so that's in stone now, that's going to be part of the, the deal, of the deal? Or we're exploring that?
I think it'll depend on funding available, if that's right, Mayor.
So if no funding is available, we won't do it?
We'll have funding available, because we have purchases for what we have in the, in our capital budget less than, so we'll have, we couldn't move on with the purchase of the bus until we had the purchase price for the Airways Motel.
All right, I would further like to, to amend the motions, at whichever time is proper to do that, is it now?
Yes, sir.
I amend the motion that this contract be accepted contingent upon the, for lack of a better name, contingent upon the Meriwether Group reimbursing the taxpayers one half of this two hundred and sixty thousand dollars that the taxpayers are losing with this deal.
Yeah, you're right. Should we have discussion on that?
Hold on, we got a motion for the amendment, is there a second on the amendment? I'm sorry, you're, one half of the two sixty, so that would be one thirty?
Yes.
All right, so there's a motion to amend, is there a second? Is there a second to amend the motion? All right, motion to amend, dies for lack of a second. All right, any further discussion?
I, I think we've gotten right track, but just like to point out, this will all be borrowed money.
No, this one, this is already in there.
We're borrowing one point five, fifteen million dollars, if anything we're spending, we're borrowing money.
That's interesting rationale, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry, to Councilman Donell's request, they maybe could be asked to help on the shuttle or the bus, that might be appropriate, and that could be in the discussion through October the thirty-first.
Well, I did, when they did come, I did ask them, would they be willing to make investments, some of them, they said they would, so I guess we could have a conversation with them, but I don't think we need to rely on them giving us money back to the term. I mean, we still got to look at people, these summers, November, it's going to get cold again.
Let me.
Let me finish first, let me finish first.
All right.
But I don't want to keep on putting people's lives on, I mean, people's going to get, it's going to be cold outside. We had that one death, and how many more we going to have? I mean, I can't put two hundred thousand on my life, nobody else's life, I mean, I won't, I apologize to resident people that we did spend that money, but we were still trying to come up to accommodate people, but I think we just can't put a price on somebody else's life. And asking them people to reimburse, reimburse us money, they, they probably ain't going to do it just like that.
Mayor, can I add one more thing? So, you know, certainly hear the discussion, and I welcome the ability to be able to get shelter faster by this winter, and I'm hopeful that we can move in and no, no renovation issues. Amy McDonald asked me to share, this Friday, we're having a veteran resource fair from ten to one at T R White, those are ways the community can plug in, has shown up involving at that. Obviously, we're hopeful to see donations of any size, but getting involved and staying aware of resource fairs is an important thing, and then we're going to continue doing homeless outreach regardless, whatever the status is of the shelter, like we have been, so know that we're still working on this alongside this major issue, so I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, public attention, council's attention too.
Has, has, sorry, how has that been advertised, that fair that's happening?
It's been sent to local media, there's flyers out, there's a number of partners that are involved in it, the city's involved, nonprofit organizations, employers, this one's specific to veterans, but yeah, it's ten to one on Friday at T R White.
Thank you.
I have one other question, what is the square foot cost that we're paying for this building?
We didn't know we were going to have a math problem.
I'm sorry.
That's a pop quiz.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the square footage is.
So you don't know the cost for square foot?
Well, but if you find out and divide by a million, you'll divide it into a million, that'll tell you.
You'll get whatever, whatever it was.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion to pass seven to one.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four is consideration of a child's saving account, child savings account consultant contract.
Good morning.
Tyler Carr and Charlie, Dr. Charlie Deal here to go over the contract.
Yeah, so the simple way to put this is this contract is from grant money that I acquired this past summer through the Cities for Financial Empowerment, which is a entity that we partner with that do financial empowerment work nationally, and so they periodically release grant dollars for different opportunities. The summer was actually an opportunity to further the work of one of the programs I'm currently working on. And so in my office, there's two primary programs that are currently, one's already been completed, one's underway. One is the Financial Empowerment Center, which you all are familiar with, the second is children's savings accounts. And so the technical assistant that I work with, who is also from the Cities for Financial Empowerment, the grantor, suggested that we use this money to do a fundraising consultant, to build out a strategic fundraising plan for the future of the program. And so the eventual, eventual hope is that this program will be, I'll, I'll build this program out, this will be something that we can hand off to a different entity, there'll be a coordinator over this program. And my work with Dr. Deal would result in a strategic fundraising portfolio that I can hand over to whoever would be running the program. This program isn't novel, it's not something new that I've just started, it's something that was being worked on before I even got here in this office. And it's also something that is done nationally, and so there's a tangential improvement with the program and the results of the program, basically with how much money gets put into the program. And so there is a, a base cost to get the program situated, which we could talk about, there's also incremental change for students, and more likelihood that students will pursue post-secondary education, which is the goal of the program, once they graduate. And that follows pretty closely with how much money can be put into the program for different types of things, like touch points to the families, educational opportunities, financial literacy opportunities, all throughout the student's life. And so all that to say, this, today is an approval for the contract to start work with Dr. Deal as a fundraising consultant.
All right, any questions from council?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to say, I'm really excited about this, when I met with you one-on-one, for us to be investing in children's future, for this to be something that is actually the child's, that for whatever reasons, the parents cannot be involved in that, I think it's real exciting for Jackson and for our community, and, and I, I hope this really pans out and works well, so.
Any other questions?
Just to make sure, this is one of your grant, the funding?
They, they want it to be spent over a six-month period.
Okay.
And so, yeah.
But is, is full of your rent funded?
Yes, sir.
And investments, I think you answered this, but just for the public, that this money can be put in, it's just like regular savings, can, can it be put in stocks?
So the way, the way that this typically works, there's different avenues that can be pursued for building out this type of program. The most common national model is that this program starts as a general savings account. Russ, you had a great, a great question in agenda review, kind of similar, Councilman Larry, about this. And the reason for this is because the goal of the program actually isn't to try to pay for a child's tuition. The point of the program is, from kindergarten until twelfth grade, to have enough touch points with the families and to have enough literacy and opportunities for the families that they're thinking about college. And there's data that's been released that that type of model, not having tuition paid for, which would be nice in a five-twenty-nine plan or some type of money market account, but just simply having the touch points and the savings account that is available to them to be expended on educational purposes, it does push them towards pursuing post-secondary education, which is the goal of the program.
I too want to commend you for finding this program and thinking about that and developing it.
Well, I'll have to give credit to, to Mayor and some of those before me, but I'm, I'm very glad to take on and champion the work, for sure. Thank you, Councilman.
Are there any additional questions? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item five is consideration to authorize health and sanitation to apply for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar recycling equipment grant, including a twenty percent match.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item six, consideration of committee and board appointments. Jackson Municipal Regional Planning Commission, reappointment of Pat Ross.
So moved.
Second.
And motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item seven is budget amendments less than ten thousand. Item eight, consideration of invoice is over ten thousand.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.